You scared the heck out of everybody.
Okay, all right, we're on the air and welcome everyone this evening. And with that, I will call the meeting to order, and would you like to join us in the Pledge Allegiance to the Plaque?
The Pledge Allegiance to the Plaque of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary, roll call.
Holden.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Ellen.
Here.
Hufensby.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Milbeth.
Here. Okay, and first, we have another special presentation this evening, and we have Charles Upton here from the Purple Heart Order, and he would also like to do introductions, and he would like to give us a presentation of the plaque.
This is my department chaplain, Franklin Strater. My name is Charles Upton, I'm the Department Commander for the Military Order of the Purple Heart. And we have been working on this project since June, and with the mayor's help and a few other people, we had gotten Oregon named as the first Purple Heart City in the state of Oregon, which was closely followed by Medford. It was my great honor to live in this state and live in this city, and I've lived here all my life, and I've noticed how well the veterans are received here in the city of Albany. And that's the major reason that the city of Albany is named the first city of Oregon to be the Purple Heart City. With that, I would like to present the city with a plaque, and it reads, "Military Order of the Purple Heart Special Recognition Award is bestowed with pride to the city of Albany, the first Purple Heart City of Oregon, for your dedication and support honoring Americans' combat wounded veterans, becoming the first Purple Heart City, presented by the Patriot Members of the Department of Oregon Military Order of the Purple Heart USA."
Well, thank you so much, Charles, and we will find a place here in City Hall to hang this plaque, so it's quite an honor to be the first city in Oregon to be able to have be a Purple Heart City. But thank you for all your work, too, for, you know, making this be able to happen to get this award, but, so thank you so much, thank you for attending, thank you. Did you want to pass it down? Yeah, councilors can see. Okay, okay, so scheduled business is we have a quasi-judicial public hearing, and on the agenda is a quasi-judicial and legislative public hearing regarding planning file, D.C. 0213. The proposed amendments to the Albany Development Code would add a definition for redemption center in Article 22 and amend special conditions in Articles 4 and 5 to allow redemption centers through site plan review or conditional use approval in the regional commercial, community commercial, light industrial, neighborhood commercial, and Main Street Zones. The location for the proposed use is 1224 Saniam Highway Southeast in the Main Street Zoning District. The applicant is Stephanie Marcus from the Oregon Beverage Recycling Cooperative. I call to order this legislative public hearing at 7:18 PM. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Do any members wish to report any ex parte contact? Floyd?
I have had some contact with some people in the neighborhood, just finding out background, and, but I don't think it'll modify anything I would hear tonight or outweigh a decision.
Yeah, I talked to some neighbors about the situation, person to come to the meeting.
All right.
I'm sorry, but these ex parte disclosures will not meet the definition of the law if challenged, you need to know. But the whole purpose for disclosing ex parte communications is so that someone in the audience can give you essentially contradictory information based on what you heard. If you don't disclose any of the substance of what you heard, and only disclose that you had an ex parte communication, you open the door to a challenge that is indefensible. So, I mean, what you need to do, if you have ex parte communications, I'm sorry, you should disclose the substance, like a citizen told me he thought we should not have this because of blah, 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 or a citizen thought it was a good idea because of blah, 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 and then the audience has a chance to say why they thought that information was wrong. I'm sorry.
Okay, I would modify my comment than saying I had a resident call and ask for a contact number for Salvation Army, they were interested in making an offer on the site. I obtained that number from Salvation Army board member and gave it to the citizens.
Okay, all right.
Sorry, you're saying I need to name the person I talked to.
If you know who it was, or at least the substance of the communication, it can be simply a constituent called to suggest whatever. And again, it's only so that if you gained information in that ex parte context, someone in the audience would have a chance to say why they think that information is correct or incorrect.
I gained no substantial information, other than the person might come to the meeting.
All right, so do any members wish to report a site visit? Okay, and do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? And does anyone wish to challenge the city council's right to determine this matter or the participation of any counselor in this hearing and decision? If you wish to testify, please sign in at the table next to the city clerk. And for all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Any continuance or extension of the record requested by the applicant shall result in a corresponding extension to the 120-day limit. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. At this time, I call for the staff report from Planner David Martinew.
Hello, Mayor, and members of council, I'm David Martinew, I'm the lead current planner for the city of Albany. On November 1st of 2013, Stephanie Marcus submitted an application to amend the Albany Development Code to allow a beverage container redemption center to operate at the former Salvation Army building located at 1224 Saniam Highway Southeast, which is in the Main Street Zoning District. Additionally, the proposed amendment will add a new definition for redemption centers to Article 22, together with amendments to Articles 4 and 5 that would allow redemption centers through site plan review or conditional use approval in the community commercial, regional commercial, light industrial, neighborhood commercial, and Main Street zoning districts. So recycling drop-off centers are already allowed in the code through an approved site plan review in the community commercial district as well as the regional commercial district. Now, if the center is classified as a waste and recycling-related use, then it could also be allowed through an approved site plan review or conditional use in the light industrial zone. Therefore, there's no amendments that are necessary to allow redemption centers in those zones. However, recycling drop-off centers are not an allowed use in the neighborhood commercial and in the Main Street zoning districts. The Albany Planning Commission reviewed the amendment application at a January 6th, 2014 public hearing, and at that hearing, staff presented findings that supported a recommendation to approve the amendment that would add a definition for redemption center, but staff recommended denial of the proposed amendment to Article 4 to add redemption centers as a permitted use in the neighborhood commercial district, as well as recommended denial of the proposed amendment to Article 5 to allow the use in the Main Street zoning district. Staff believes that the general commercial zones, such as community commercial and regional commercial, are better suited for retail and service uses that draw customers that come from across the city or the region, like a bottle redemption center. While staff is supportive of having a redemption center in Albany, we felt that the neighborhood commercial and Main Street zoning districts were intended primarily for neighborhood-scale retail and service establishments that are designed to serve nearby residents and businesses. However, after reviewing the staff report and considering public testimony, the Albany Planning Commission, by a vote of six to zero, recommends that council approves the code amendment to Article 22 that would add a definition for redemption centers. It also recommends that you approve the proposed amendment to Article 5 to allow redemption centers as a permitted use in the Main Street zoning district, and in concurrence with staff, recommends denial of the proposed Development Code Amendment to Article 4 to add redemption centers as a permitted use in the neighborhood commercial district. A draft ordinance has been provided in your packet that reflects the Planning Commission's recommendations, should you choose to act on it. Prior to tonight's hearing, I received two letters of comment concerning the proposed amendments. The first comment was submitted by Jaco Eaton of 1628 First Avenue East in Albany. He contended that there were other suitable locations in Albany in which to cite a redemption center. He's concerned about traffic impacts to surrounding residential neighborhoods, and feels that Main Street Zone is supposed to be used for a limited retail development designed to serve nearby residents. A second letter was submitted by Sarah Stevenson of Innovative Housing Incorporated in Portland. Innovative Housing is the developer for the proposed 54-unit Woodlands Square Workforce Housing Project to be developed on Salem Avenue. She likewise expresses concern that the proposed redemption facility will be out of scale from the traditional feel of a neighborhood-oriented district that's characterized by pedestrian-friendly residential development. And copies of both of those comments have been provided to you in your package. That concludes my report.
Okay, does any councilors have clarifying questions regarding the staff report? Okay, Yip Ray?
Yes, I lightly touched on it earlier, just before the meeting with David. In the third paragraph of the executive summary, it says the Albany Development Code considers recycling drop-off centers' uses as a repair-oriented business. How can a can and bottle redemption center be considered a repair? And does that make any difference on how it is put into the code if it's not a repair center? If it's put in someplace else as another definition, would that allow it to be used in the neighborhood commercial?
The thing about this particular use and uses that would be characteristic in village center zoning districts is that the commercial centers that are located in those districts tend to be a lot smaller, both in size and scale, and so there's only limited retail, for instance, that's allowed in the Main Street zoning district, and that would be retail that's less than 6,000 square feet. The same holds true in the waterfront zone and a couple of other zones like that. And so, in the development of the code, when it looked at the differentiation between the different types of commercial uses, like retail, sales and service, or repair, you know, like even for this particular use, it acknowledges that in the Main Street Zone, repair-oriented businesses are allowed, but if you look at that, it says that they're small things, like small appliance repair, tailoring, shoe repair, that type of thing, as opposed to larger uses, such as ostensibly larger appliance repair and so on.
Okay, one more question, that was on the page that has the map. Page 30 of our packet shows the redemption site and the zoning, the radius, the one, two mile, three and a half mile. Where could it be located in our community that it wouldn't have the similar impact?
Well, they're already allowed in the community commercial and regional commercial districts.
But it would still have the same drawing effect, right?
As would any, you know, retail business in those zones, like the shopping malls and the larger retail.
I guess, what I'm still struggling with is it says that it's to serve local residents in that area. Aren't they going to be using that same center to do the same thing that everybody else will be?
But the thing is, is if you already have people that are going to the store to do their shopping, and they're also doing their cans, they're going in one direction to that center from anywhere in the region in the city. And if this use is in a zone like the Main Street Zone, all of that traffic impact is going to be going right through those neighborhoods, rather than to the areas that are more suited zoning-wise in terms of traffic, the size of the streets, the parking availability and whatnot.
But isn't that what our redevelopment and the roundabouts supposed to eliminate or alleviate? Because you have businesses right across the street, so they would be possibly taking their redemption money and walking across the street to use, spend some of their money, I guess?
I mean, I think even in the staff report, you can see that there's good, compelling cases on either side of the issue that we felt we could make. And in reflection, we felt that as a whole, we needed to recommend denial of it. You know, it's, the fact is, is that the Main Street is one of the six village center zones that set aside to have its own unique characteristic. And the opposition side felt that having a redemption center that drew not just the local neighborhood residents and employees across the street, but from people all around Albany to be coming to the site, they felt that this just wasn't an appropriate type of a use in this particular zone.
One last question, and I'll get off my. So, bucks, but the building's been vacant for five to six years and has had, so it's improving with age, I guess?
Yes, but there's, of course, other buildings in town that are zoned for it that this could go into.
That's one of the main streets in Albany. I mean, you drive that, well, you show up at that location at seven o'clock in the morning, and it's bumper-to-bumper. I mean, it's, you know, there are lots of traffic. Same thing happens in the evening, there's lots of traffic. I don't see it as a big problem from the perspective that even if it is in that zoning, it abuts the railroad, and it's on.
So, Rich, so we don't want to kind of deliberate or get our comments yet until we hear public testimony first, so just ask a question over staff report.
Never mind.
Thank you.
Just call me Gilda.
Okay, anyone else have a question over the staff report? Okay, if anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and then present it to the city clerk. Would the applicant please come forward and state your name, address, and make any comments you may have for the city council?
Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Stephanie Marcus, I'm Property Acquisitions Coordinator with Oregon Beverage Recycling Cooperative, located at 3900 Northwest Yon Avenue in Portland, Oregon. As you know, I'm here today hopefully to gain support to add a redemption center definition and its permitted use in the Main Street zoning. We currently are in contract with the Salvation Army to purchase the building located at 1224 Saniam Southeast Road, which has been vacant for over six years. Currently, our clean, staffed, and wildly popular Bottle Drops redemption centers are located in seven different locations across the state, with a rollout plan to open four of these redemption centers over the next 10 years, so four a year over the next 10 years. The centers that we have opened have seen an increase in redemption and recycling in the surrounding areas. We believe this is because of customer satisfaction with the experience and options that Bottle Drop gives. As you may know, we provide self-service machines, hand counts, a drop-and-go program. These centers not only increase recycling efforts in the communities, but also provide about eight jobs per redemption site. They are always fully staffed when they're open, our hours are nine to six, seven days a week. Finding a location for a redemption center is a big challenge in itself. I'm personally the person that goes looking all across the state for these properties along with our brokers, but we look for properties that are standalone, around 7,000 square feet. We have to have ample parking, a roll-up door, good ingress and egress, along with the right location that's close to retailers within that, we want most of our retailers within that two-mile radius of a redemption center, because the retailers are partners with us, and they pay for half of the site to run. So basically, the numbers have to work in order for the site to be up and running, and the retailers are taking half the costs, and then O B R C, which is owned by 99% of the state's distributors, are taking the other half of the cost. So that, finding that perfect location is a challenge, there's a lot that goes into it. The property located at 1224 Saniam Highway has all the criteria that we need for a center, along with a small community that has enough retailer support to make the center run and be able to open. The one issue that we are discussing today is the MS zoning that this property is located in. We feel it's a great location for a redemption center. It's an area that currently has a habitat for humanity, there's a school warehouse storage next door, it's been a vacant building, and that we can bring back to life and support both recycling, sustainability, and added jobs to your community. Staff has stated that they are supportive of a Bottle Drop redemption center and would love one in Albany, however they would like it in a different location. Personally, I have searched and know how difficult it is to find. I've looked again, as we've gone through this process, for other sites that would work in Albany, and nothing has come up that hits the necessary criteria needed in order for us to open one here. So, we're hoping to move forward and be able, with this current property, and if the passing of a redemption center definition for this zoning, be able to open summer 2014 with this redemption center. I truly believe that the city of Albany and its residents, once they experience our centers, will greatly appreciate and enjoy the convenience that these centers bring. I hope that you guys can see as well, through just at least the brochures, or maybe hearsay, because we have two in Albany of other people that have visited them, that this would be a great thing for your community, bringing it here and being one of the first, I think be the eighth or ninth redemption center in the state, as kind of this is the new rollout and the direction that Oregon's going, to be proud to be able to be one of the first in the beginning steps of this program that we're rolling out to help these redemption rates. So, do you guys have questions, Marie?
Questions? Okay.
Yes.
All right, Rich?
Is anything going to happen outside of the building?
The, well, we would be cleaning all the parking lot up, I think the parking would obviously with, we'll put in our plans, I mean, they'll paint it.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't ask the question correctly. Any of the business going to be done outside the building?
Oh, no, everything is done indoors. About, when you walk in, about 2,000 square feet of it is the retail customer space, and the rest of it is all the back room, all of it. It's not like the machines that you see in the grocery stores today, they are, they're not crushing and condensing in the actual machine, they're all built into a wall, and they're on a conveyor belt system. So, a machine takes all of the commodities, and it goes through, it sorts it, puts it on a big conveyor in the back, depending on what it is, and then it goes into a larger crusher, condenser, in the back room. And then, just as our trucks pick up at 99% of the locations, from the little 7-11s to the large retail stores, we'd have our route ops come through, pick up all the product, and then transport that product to one of our recycling plants that we have in the state, which we have a brand-new one being built in Eugene right now, so that's probably where your product would be going.
Thank you.
You have the questions, Bessie, then Bill?
I have just had one question. Does, would this center take all recycled cans and bottles? Because I know some stores only take certain ones, or?
So, it would take, it would take anything that has the five cent deposit, a lot of like tees and different things that don't have the deposit, if customers bring those in, when they go through our machines, it just comes up on the screen that says, "This is not a Oregon redeemable deposit container," but it still takes it through to be recycled.
Okay.
So it just lets the customer know.
Great, thank you.
That was my question.
All right, okay.
All right, thank you.
So for folks who signed up to speak in support of the application, I have Todd Van Domelen. And if you can state your name and address for the record, thank you.
My name is Todd Van Domelen, 8923 Northwest Mills Street, Portland, Oregon. And I'm a real estate broker, and I'm also chairman of the Advisory Council for the Salvation Army, so I'm here representing the Salvation Army in this proposal. So the Salvation Army is, obviously, in favor of the proposed amendment, and asks for your consideration for approval. The building is owned by the Salvation Army, and it has been vacant now for, as previously discussed, just over six years. And the property is, has been a drain on the Salvation Army, they're, they have to maintain it, and it's funds that could be used for going into their programs. And it's been, it's been difficult to sell because the Main Street Zone is restrictive, and the majority of the, the majority of the proposed buyers or uses for the property has been not retail-oriented, you know, just where the property is located and the neighbors, it's been, the interest has been primarily from contractors, you know, roofing companies that are not allowed in the zone. And so, it's been, it's been very difficult to attract qualified buyers, you know, to be interested, interested in the building. Having the building vacant has not been good for the neighborhood, it's, it doesn't look good. You talk about going into the main part of downtown, it's just, it's, it's, it's not looking any better. They've done the best they can about keeping it up, but it's, it's boarded up, and it's not, this is an opportunity to bring the building back, you know, to a use that would serve the residents in the area. So your approval could facilitate the sale of the property, and they have plans to remodel the building, and I think it would be much more attractive, and it would also bring people to the neighborhood, and it would be beneficial to the surrounding businesses in the neighborhood. And by the Salvation Army selling the property, it would allow them to take the proceeds from the sale, and rather than being a drain on some of their resources, it could be put back into their needed, very needed programs into the community. So they asked that you support the amendment to approve the code amendment to allow redemption center in the Main Street Zone.
All right, is there any questions of Mr. Van Domelen? Yeah, Floyd?
Maybe you're the right person, Todd. Is the proposed buyer a tax exempt organization, or is it taxable?
It's taxable, I believe, yeah, it's taxable.
All right, okay, thank you. Okay, we have several that have signed up in opposition, but I need to find out if there's anyone that would like to come forward and speak in support of the application. Okay, not seeing anyone. So first on the list in opposition is Heather Hill. Heather?
Hello, I'm Heather Hill from Legacy Ballet, actually owner of Legacy Ballet, and we are located at 104 Main Street Southeast. As a business owner that has leased a building in the Main Street District for almost six years now, I would like to express my disagreement with the possible zoning change to allow for a bottle redemption center in the Main Street District. While a bottle redemption center might help promote more can recycling in Albany, I feel it could be better located in a different area. For six years, we have struggled to make a positive impact on the close-by neighborhood and community, and have seen the other local business owners do the same, as well and community, and have seen the other local business owners do the same, as well as nearby residents devoting time and energy to the community garden. We've begun to see the city of Albany have a vision for the Main Street area and the waterfront area, and we have hopes that in the near future, rather than buying, rather than being the part of town considered the wrong side of the railroad tracks or the bridges, we will become part of a hub connecting tourists to the waterfront and historical downtown Albany. While Albany has residents who are consumers of bottled and canned products that recycle their own empties, or donate them to bottle collection fundraisers, there's also a population of those that search in our garbage cans for empties that could have mistakenly been thrown away, and return them to collect funds. The pedestrian and bicycle traffic this could create, if located in the Main Street area, could complicate our already existing issues, especially if grocery stores within two miles are no longer required to take returns. All of that being said, I also feel only fair to share you may want to consider my opinion biased. Here's why. In July 2013, the owner of our current building placed it on the market, and due to ownership issues and maintenance issues, we began to search for a new location. And on August 16th, we submitted an offer to purchase, with Todd Van Domlin, to be presented by Todd to the Salvation Army. We were told that someone who needed to look at the offer was on vacation for a week. After waiting a week, coincidentally, another offer came in, and during that time, we were told that they reviewed both offers and declined ours and accepted the other. While we will never know if our plans for the building at 1224 Saniam Highway would have ever worked out, as a Main Street business owner, we don't see the bottle redemption center as part of the vision for this area. While ownership of our current location is up in the air, we hope to stay in this area and are excited to see the city's vision for this area take shape.
All right, any questions of Heather? All right, thank you, Heather. Okay, next is Arthur Meeker.
My name's Arthur Meeker with Extreme Graphics, and we're located at 505 Main Southeast, which is right around the corner from this proposed bottle redemption. Some of the issues that I just have with that is the traffic. We already have a lot of traffic that comes down Main Street right now, and where our building is located, the city and the railroad jointly decided not to do any improvements right across about a block and a half, and so there's already a considerable amount of traffic, and the road's in poor shape to begin with. So, I think that that bottling center is going to, is going to raise, bring a lot more traffic down that road, along with my concerns about the parking at this new center and the traffic that it's going to generate on Saniam. Our property, we actually own, we own two pieces of property. We own the piece that goes right behind the Salvation Army building, all the way down to Saniam. And there's also a vacated street, which is our back entrance to our property, that goes between the Salvation Army and that warehouse, the, the school district warehouse. And I'm concerned about that being blocked, because that's an egress to our, our property too. And so, I was told that that was, that can never, you know, be blocked or partially blocked. So, I'm really concerned about that. And I'm also concerned about all the extra foot traffic, and we already have a problem in the neighborhood. I've talked to a lot of the neighbors around the area and the other businesses with the crime rate in that area, and we, we've had problems, a lot of problems with our property, with people breaking into the, into our parking lot and stealing out of our vehicles, cutting holes through the fences, stuff like that. And, and I've been down there in the middle of the night working and see lots of people foot traffic, and people with their little carts going back and forth and collecting stuff along the way. And so, I, I'm very concerned about the added, added part to the, the equation, so...
Okay, any questions, Martha? Yeah, Rich?
Arthur, do you think with the, the folks that generally come and go, the ones with carts, and, I mean, you see them over and over and over, is that, is that a reasonable...
Oh, yeah.
If they found out that everything was inside where they couldn't get to it, do you think they'd still show up at the same level?
Yeah, I think they would show up if that's where they're going to return their bottling, the bottle...
Oh, I mean, in the middle of the night, where, when they'd be stealing stuff.
They might just be camping out on the, you know, and waiting for them to open, so that's, there's, the railroad tracks is like the big highway through town for the people. And, and I, I see them walking up and down the railroad tracks, I see them walking, and I'm, I'm not sure, I heard that the redemption center is like 5,000 square feet and above stores that would take the returns, but Main Street happens to be the hub for people coming from, that are homeless, coming down the street and purchasing at Circle K or 7-11 down the road. Once a week, I'm having to clean up the empty 40 cans leaning against our building or puke along the front of our building. And, and so I think if we have this hub where they're going to be returning cans and stuff, and it's right there next to our, our property, I think that could possibly be a problem too.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you, Arthur. Okay, next on the list is Penny Williams.
My name is Penny Williams. I am the homeowner at 434 Main Street Southeast here in Albany. I'm here with concerns about the, the center coming in. As a homeowner in this small location, small neighborhood, I think that the traffic, like Arthur was talking about, is a huge concern for me and everyone else that lives in that neighborhood. Already, there's a lot of foot traffic, because everyone is going to 7-11 to return their bottles. If there's a redemption center right here, and it is on the route from the homeless center to the edge of town, wherever they, they go, it's going to just create more theft and a lot of littering, I guess I'm trying to find the word, littering, and, and it is just traffic all day and all night. And I don't believe that if the hours are just during the day, even if it's going to be seven days a week, so every weekend, I mean, it will just create more, more problems for that neighborhood. And it's already a concern, you know, to live there, and everyone that lives in around that neighborhood pretty much has lived there for a very long time. Everyone's homeowners that have lived, I've been living there for 23 years. And everyone's trying to make it a little bit of a better neighborhood. It's kind of, I realize it's right by the railroad tracks, but I am, where the building is, where the Salvation Army is, is just one building and a street away from all these homes. And the noise, I think, is a concern for me. They say they're open until 6:00, but I don't know when these trucks, when they come and pick it up and deliver it. Is that going to be early in the morning, late at night? Is it going to be all seven days a week? And I think that the traffic also is going to be an issue. Even with the roundabout, that's still small streets, every OSU football game, it's, even with the roundabout and the improvements that are going to be made there, I think you're going to find that that is so close to that intersection, that the traffic is just, and I think it's just a small, little residential neighborhood, and the businesses there are small. And if everyone in Albany and North Albany are all going to be coming right there to do all of their recycling, it is not going to be a small neighborhood, community, it's turning it into an industrial area. I'm very concerned about that.
Okay, any questions of Ms. Williams? All right, okay, thank you.
Is it possible to find out when, about the after-hours of that business?
The applicant will have time to come up for a rebuttal, and we'll see about them addressing that for you, yeah, for the hours.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the list is Margaret Fourney.
Fourn?
Fourn, I'm sorry. And if you can spell your last name for the record, since it is...
Margaret Fourn, F-O-U-R-N-E. I live at 924, 926 Fourth Avenue Southeast. I still swap, switch those around. I'm a resident in the area, I live about Hill Street and Fourth, so I'm two blocks away from the proposed location. And I did have some questions, I haven't been able to get a lot of pre-information about this. One of the questions that I did have was, what was the operation hours? And I think you said nine to six. Can I ask a question, or?
I'm just asking to...
Is it Monday through Friday, or seven days a week?
Since you're just asking that now, when the applicant comes up, she can, she can mention that.
Okay.
She did mention seven days a week.
Or seven days a week.
Seven days a week.
Yeah.
Okay, so that was one of my concerns. It's a very quiet neighborhood, even though we have, I, I sit on my back porch all the time, and it is so silent during the day, during the week, during the weekends especially. It's amazing, there's just a couple of barking dogs. And my, one of my concerns has been, what is the noise level going to be to the outside? She's saying that everything is done inside, but I've been to the recycling place down here, and you can hear glass crashing when you're loading up your stuff, so that was one of my concerns, is, are we going to be hearing crushing sounds going on through the neighborhood throughout the day and night? And again, like Penny said, are, are the operations behind the scenes going to be going on 24 hours a day, or is it just the nine to six? So, any kind of evening or weekend noise is just going to really degrade the quality of the neighborhood. And I totally agree with the, the whole foot traffic thing. I live in an apartment complex that has a dumpster, and all through the night, there's people going through our dumpster looking for those recycling, or returnables, so they can take them over to 7-11. And it's very unsettling to come out and see these people in your dumpster, and you don't know how, what they're on. We know, we're all talking about people with drug issues, and going down those side streets So, those are my concerns. The traffic, I just think is going to be unbelievable. When that train comes down at Saniam, you've got, what, room for maybe 20 cars between that and Main Street? You add all those cars trying to pull in and out of that building, I think it's, it's going to be ridiculous. It's already ridiculous. I mean, just those few minutes that you have to wait, if you're caught at Saniam trying to go whatever, towards Walgreens, you're caught on this side of the train. The traffic blocks there, and then it blocks up to Main, and then it just keeps blocking all the way around until, you know, the, you can finally get through. So, I work at Dairy Mart, I have been wanting one of these redemption centers since we first heard about them. Totally think we need it. I have a different location in mind. My thought was, what somebody has called the Old Tom's Gardening Center, that's on Pacific, but I don't know about the space requirements, but there is that other big, big brick building right next to it. So, I've often thought, why couldn't we put one there? With all the homeless people coming from the shelter area? I mean, they just, everybody knows who takes the cans, so Dairy Mart, I'm the one at Queen and Elm, so we just, it's just ridiculous how many carts we go through every day. And so, even though this site might lessen up, if we're in the two-mile radius, might lessen up what I have to take at work, I'm not willing to give that up to what I'm going to have to hear and see at home. Okay? So, that's the traffic, the quality of life, and the noise. Those are my concerns.
Okay, all right, any questions? Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that's it on the list for folks that signed up for in opposition. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak in opposition? Yes, Emma?
I'm sorry I didn't follow the process, please forgive me.
Oh, no, that's fine.
I heard late about this, and I wanted to be here to put a face to this.
Uh-huh. Okay, can just take the name...
My name is Emma Eaton, I live at 1638 First Avenue East. I have a tremendous investment emotionally, financially, physically, and with blood in this neighborhood. And I'm willing to fight for it. I've seen changes, promising changes, on the Main Street District, and I want to flip side for you. If this was in your Main Street, would you support it? To me, allowing a zoning change is setting a bad precedent. People are starting to have hope that they do have a Main Street, that they will have a quality of life in their community. And it also affects property values when you start making these changes. So, that's why I disagree. I, I represent and respect the project, I think it's a valuable one, but setting the precedent of allowing zoning changes when we're just starting to have some promise, a glint of hope, is wrong. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Emma. Anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Okay, not seeing anyone. Is there anyone that would, in the audience, wish to speak, who is neither in favor nor in opposition to the application? Okay. And, and does the applicant have any rebuttal testimony? I think there was a couple of questions that were mentioned, if you could address those.
Yes. So, I've heard a lot of concern on the noise, kind of foot traffic, that it's going to bring down the neighborhood, worries about crime and theft. I'll start with the hours. They are nine to six, seven days a week. In the summertime, we'll do nine to seven. There is nothing going on after those hours. When we shut the doors, our employees are cleaning up and out the doors, everything's locked up. We have cameras on the exterior of the building, we have cameras on, in the inside of it. These are very clean, nice, well-kept retail centers. Our staff is trained and, to get people to come in and then leave and go on their way. Their wa, populations are welcome, anybody's welcome to use our centers, but there are rules, and there's expectations when you come into a retail establishment. We use those same things, just as if you were to go into a grocery store, and if there was problems, you would be asked to leave. We haven't seen, at our other centers, issues with homeless hanging around, just camping out. I mean, it's just, I think if you, we set the precedent of, we welcome you in, here's our services, it's a warm place, if you want to continue using them, here are our rules, if you follow those, you can continue. And it's worked out fine, we haven't had any issues. For noise, everything is inside, yes, we have, we were talking, I had heard about the crushing and the glass you hear at the grocery stores, that's all happening inside of the machine. Our machines take it to the conveyor, we have large crushers or compactors, these have soundproofing on them, I mean, you can hear it when you are somewhat in the center, but even between where your, the retail wall is, we have soundproofing walls between our back area. From, when you walk out that door, you would have no idea. We do have a few centers that are next to other retail establishments, we're next door to a pizza place, we're next door to like a solar panel type of sales office. Obviously, we soundproof and use, well, we use Quiet Rock to soundproof when we go in for our remodels. We've never had any issues when we've had a neighbor and they're at an adjoining wall, let alone when you walk outside of our facility. So, neighbors wouldn't be, at least from our operations standpoint, hearing anything. As for our trucks, and when they would be coming up, that all depends on the amount of product that we have coming in. It would not be a daily pickup, most likely for, I mean, I'm looking at Albany's... Most likely for, I mean, I'm looking at Albany's, because you guys are kind of just secluded, has about 18 million units with, or in your town that are being, or out and about, that we at least see returned right now. And so this is a much smaller redemption center compared to, we have ones that are doing 37 million, and we don't even have trucks going every day for pickups there. We work within requirements and what has been requested of when to do pickups. I mean, our trucks are on routes all over the state, all through, during the day, so we are very flexible on when we can pick up at places and are accommodating to that. So it wouldn't be coming in in the middle of the night. I mean, our route drivers start, you know, early in the morning. They're leaving our plant area at, say, five in the morning, and then coming back later in the evening, you know, five o'clock, they're all back in. So it's kind of all during-the-day shifts that are happening here with not a huge amount of noise or disruption, I feel. Let's see, what else? We do have, out of our seven centers, I quickly came up with three that I know are all right next to residential neighborhoods, and we have not had residents that have complained. We, you know, go and speak with, before we open, at community meetings within those smaller residential neighborhoods, let them know what's going on, kind of go through all their questions to try to make them feel as confident as possible, because I think there's kind of a bad rap that you get when you say bottle and can and redemption. And what these centers are showing communities is that we can change kind of this vision of what we think of, of these recycling rooms that are at the retailers, and it's a completely different environment than historically, I think, what comes to mind. So, and that's why I really do believe that once given the chance and to experience it, or if anybody in the community personally would like to come see one of our other centers, we give tours, because this is, as any sort of change and new idea, change is scary, there's resistance. We welcome and want to show you that we really, truly believe in what we're putting out there is good for communities and kind of the organ bottle bill and the direction we should be moving towards.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
Questions?
Yeah, Rich.
How many people you get a day in one of your facility? Well, you said we're at 18 million units, and I'm thinking that's per year?
Yeah, that's.
Okay. So the people that, that do 30-some million, how many people in a day go into a place?
I mean, it varies. Each kind of site has its, gets its own little schedule of when there's busy times we can see anywhere. I would, I mean, at our large centers, we're seeing 20 to 25 cars come in per hour, and they're there for, you know, I mean, we have a drop-and-go program too, so not all, all the cars that are coming in, they may just be going up to the easy drop door on the outside, dropping off their green bags that we count, and then leaving. But that's at our busy centers, we see about 20 to 25 customers per hour.
And that is, how, in the busy center, how many, how many million units would you be dealing with in a year in a busy center?
About 30 million, 30-plus. So this is quite a bit smaller, so we think that the impact is smaller. We, obviously, our centers that are larger are the ones that we've opened and had kind of have a little bit more idea of this footprint. And when we open them, and even centers that we think would be smaller, a lot of the metro areas, you get a lot more, I mean, you can do two miles, but there's, the population is just so much larger to come in. This is much more secluded, that we would expect a lot less than that 20 to 25.
In, in the plant, is there a perimeter fence in Orks?
There is not a perimeter fence.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, does any staff member wish to respond to any testimony presented?
I don't, I don't think we have any, anything specific about the testimony. Obviously, it, there's, on, on one hand, you have a building that's sat vacant for six years, and it meets a business model very well for the Bottle Redemption Center. On the other hand, you have the Main Street zoning district that was set up for a very specific purpose, to create this Main Street neighborhood. And that is a neighborhood, neighborhood commercial kind of facilities, where obviously the Bottle Redemption is a regional facility for Albany. You know, any store within that two-mile radius can stop taking bottles and cans once this facility is open. So it, it is a, there's that policy tension for you to consider those two, two different competing interests.
Question for Mark. Would our, would our questions come during our discussion after this is over, or?
And procedurally, since essentially information or argument was provided by staff there, you're going to need to open it back up to allow, that's fine, if anyone wants to comment in response to Director Shepherd's comment.
Anyone want to respond? No? Okay. Okay. Anything else? Okay. All right. So with that, I declare the public hearing closed, and that's at 8:11 PM. And counsel, what would you, any comments, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, question?
Mark, how many, how many vehicles go past on Saniam per day?
I don't have that number available. Apologize.
It occurs to me that if that's a large number, and, you know, it's a whole lot of folks, 20 cars, 12 cars an hour is not going to be much of a difference. Depends on how close 12 is, or 20, or whatever else. But it'd be nice to know.
I guess that was one of my questions, was there any kind of a TSB traffic analysis on traffic impacts from, from the redemption center per se? Did it have any kind of impacts on that? But regardless of that, if any kind of a retail establishment came in, wouldn't it be generating traffic and noise and be open possibly?
Yeah, the, the question here is, the facility being proposed is really a regional facility versus a neighborhood-targeted service facility.
Play the devil's advocate with yourself. A, a business came in that was quote-unquote neighborhood, and it became eminently successful, and people started to come to it because it was successful. Isn't that doing the same thing?
It, it certainly could happen.
Bessie, and then Dick.
Let's see. Initially, I was for the placement of this business there. Then the more I read and the more I thought about it, I became concerned about the negative effects it could have on the neighborhood. Not to stereotype anybody, but, you know, a lot of the people who take cans to cash in, it could actually, I mean, it could very well be detrimental to the neighborhood. And I understand what the neighbors are saying, that, you know, they have crime there already. And the neighbors, the people living there have tried so hard, and they're still trying, to clean up the neighborhood, to make it a good place, you know, to a safe place. And I really think that it's a good service that we need, but I just don't think, I, I agree with staff on this, now that I've read more, I've heard more, I'm thinking, we don't want to have them take three steps forward, and then they have to go back two steps because of it bringing more people to the neighborhood. They're going to be wandering around, and who knows? But, so I, I'm going to listen to the rest of the council and see what they come up with, see what ideas they come up with. But at this point, I do not believe that I would vote for it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm wondering if the staff can tell me, places where this has, this has been done, other places, I think. And do stores, when there is a recycling center like this, say, okay, I'm just not going to take any more cans back, it's a big pain in the neck, and you take your cans off to the recycling center?
I, I, what I, the law allows stores to stop taking recyclables.
Yeah, I see that page.
I don't know, I couldn't speak for if they, all stores stop or, or don't taking, take those recyclables.
Well, I can see potentially where essentially every can or bottle that's sold in Albany is going to, at some point, have to travel back to this recycling center. And, oh, when I drive through that area, and I live fairly close to it, middle of the day, it's not bad. But rush hour time, it's a zoo over there. And I think we recognize that by our talking about putting in a roundabout and some other improvements there at Saniam Road Two. So I'm thinking, aside from annoying the neighborhood, and I can totally identify with that, particularly Mrs. Fournay's comments. I live a block from a major arterial. I live on Broad Alvin Street, right out here. It's blocked from Ellsworth Street. I wake up at eight o'clock in the morning, because there's a lot of traffic on Ellsworth Street. During the day, it's not so bad. And after the rush hour night, it quiets right down, like, as you say. And I think adding a big traffic generator that's all day and into the evening is a burden to this neighborhood. And while we're trying to, through CARA, to bring this neighborhood around, make it more livable, make it more attractive, ma, make it a Main Street environment, I think that it's a mistake to change the zoning on this, at this point.
Okay, all right. Rich?
Couple of things occurred to me. I recognize people want to have a quiet neighborhood. I see no possibility of having a quiet neighborhood when you have 20 trains going past you a day with, with horns going on. Now, if I understand correctly that everything is inside and it is insulated, so that you don't hear it from outside, I think that point is moot. That is, that could, that could be a requirement. As far as having, you know, if, just the, the rough calculation of 12 vehicles, 12 groups, 12 individuals, or 12 drop-offs per hour, that's not all that many when you consider, I mean, what do they have across, right across the street? It's not like it's a lot of folks for a store. The other thing is, they are abutting the railroad, which is, you know, it's not like they're in the middle of something, it's they're on the edge of something. And this is just stuff that occurs to me, I, you know, I'm listening. But if there is, you know, if you can quantify that we're not going to have the noise, if there was a perimeter fence so people could not walk through, I mean, it would, it would discourage the very people who are out there looking to sell five, five bottles so that they can get some money to go buy a pack of cigarettes or something. It's, it's not the, the same kind of a situation, so.
It, it does seem, and maybe it is only, you know, 12 or 25 per hour, but I guess it's sort of the unknown, because we don't know how many stores would stop taking, you know, the returned bottles. So if every store in Albany stopped, you know, and then everybody went to this recycling center, I mean, each time you even come to Fred Meyer's, there could be a dozen people there at one time putting bottles in the machine, and the same at Safeway and everyone else. So I'm thinking, boy, if there was, all stores didn't take the returns, that, to me, would have to be more than 25 an hour, you know, you would think, but that I don't know. It's just visualizing it, seeing what I see already in the stores, how many people are lined up putting their recycles in the machine, but.
Well, it occurs to me that we could leave it open and get actual numbers back, if that was, if that was the will of the council. I mean, there, you would be able to find from, you know, where, wherever they have other systems, the one in Salem, or the one, you know, someplace close, or Eugene, how many total population and how much is generated. I mean, it's, it's not going to be a whole lot different in Albany than it is in Corvallis or in Eugene or Salem for, you know, I drink very, however much soda I drink, as individual people, or beer, or whatever else it is.
We, we had one of these recycling centers, I don't know, it's been more than 10 years ago. I think it was on Queen by the railroad tracks. But it, you know, you didn't get as much back on your returns, so it ended up not being a viable business. But, and, but I think probably the more, to pick up more business, to make this more feasible, would be this new state rule that allows the grocery stores to opt out on taking returns if they have one of these recycling centers within a certain distance. But, yeah. Any other comments, or Bessie?
Yeah, I was wondering, you know, if I can ask the applicant, but my question after listening to that was, in the stores that they already have opened up in the other cities, how many, how many cities have, where the other stores have just stopped taking? I mean, that would be, you know, kind of like where you're going, Mayor, is, did they continue to take them, or did they take it? I mean, can the applicant answer?
No, we can't. We'd have to reopen up the hearing if we had the applicant answer anything, so. So counsel, you've.
You can, you can move to reopen the hearing.
You'd have to make a motion to reopen the hearing.
But, if I may, procedurally, one other thing you run in against, run up against is, if you're making your decision based on essentially anecdotal information, it's pretty precarious. So you say to an applicant, for example, tell me approximately how many this or that.
Yeah.
Unless you have, if that truly is a pivot point for your decision, you have to ask yourself, are you really making it based on substantial evidence, or are you making it based on anecdotal statements that are, that are rough estimates, that are averages statewide? In addition, in response to Counselor Kellum's comment, one of the challenges you have in this kind of a context, when you're doing a land use decision, is you have to make your decision based on the evidence that's presented to you at the hearing. If you do not feel that you have adequate information to satisfy you you're making the right decision, you should deny in the absence of that information. If you feel you have the information you need, that's fine. Or if there is sufficient time within the 120-day time limit that staff customarily has to act on these things, you could table the decision, ask staff to bring you back information. You wouldn't be reopening the hearing necessarily. Well, you would. If you ask staff to go get you new information, you're going to have to reopen the hearing so that others can respond to staff. So that's kind of the quandary you find yourself in. We haven't done a lot of quasi-judicial land use in the last few years, because there hasn't been that much activity, but, so we're kind of having to refresh our results on the rules.
Yeah, I think.
So, so there is counsel. You know, one would be just the amendment, adding the definition into our development code. I mean, that is, you know, something you can take action on that, unless, and then you can, you know, a, a different motion would be whether you want to include the use into the Main Street zoning.
And David, let me make a suggestion, because I think that the alternative motions and so forth are confusing in this situation. Would it work out, do you have the time, that if counsel gives you a motion with four votes that tells you what you want, what they want, you could, that could be a tentative decision, you could come back then with supporting findings and a, a formal motion with findings then that does just that, as opposed to, there's too many blanks to fill in on this one. So you have the time, so I think, don't make it hard on yourself in the form. Tell the staff what you want. Frame it as a tentative decision. We will come back to you then with findings that support whatever tentative decision. We will come back to you then with findings that support whatever tentative decision you make. You will then make your final decision to adopt those findings if they are what you wanted.
You still have to reopen the hearing, I think.
No. No, because you're not getting new information, you're simply making the decision. So when you adopt the findings, that's not, what you would do in a land use process at this stage, hearing's closed, you've got your information, you're now making a decision. In that decision, you are not only saying yes or no, you are also adopting findings that support your yes or no. And so what you often will do in this context, where staff doesn't know in advance what you're going to want to do, you will tell staff what your conclusions are in a motion with four votes. We will then go back and write it up with the formal legalese, with the findings that support whatever conclusions you have come to. And then we bring that back to you at the next meeting. There is no reopening of a hearing. You just act on it, and if you don't like the findings, you tell us to change them.
Well, would it make sense then to look at page six of our notes? And in the upper part of the page, look at pages one, two, and three, and say we approve the staff's recommendation that we approved number one, deny number two, and deny number three?
Well, if you are intending to adopt the staff position and not the planning commission, then David, I'll defer to you. Wouldn't that be, wouldn't Counselor Olson be correct?
Honestly, I, I'm not sure that, that acting on staff's recommendation over the planning commission, if that would be even permissible.
It is.
Is it? Okay.
About us doing it.
It's not, it's a little unconventional, I suppose, but sure.
Happens all the time.
I mean, we, we provide the record, and so, given that, if-
Well, then, I mean, assuming that, if, if that's not what you are suggesting, if the council does not want to go along with the planning commission, what are you proposing?
I see what you're saying, okay. Uh, then, yes, it's, I think, an anecdotal.
We just want to approve what's right.
Has to bring back findings.
Yes, and then they would bring back findings. So your motion, if that is what you want to do, you, you could simply say that I make a tentative decision as per, uh, correct me, David, if I'm wrong, as per the proposal that's at the top of page six, and you direct staff to come back at the next meeting with findings to support that action.
Okay.
And if you want then to modify or do something different, just tell us what you want, and our job is to bring it back to you in a form that reflects your choice. The more information you give us about why you want to do things, the better job we will do in making sure we tailor findings to support your wishes, but that's our job to do.
Counsel clear on that? What would you like to do?
Well, I'd like to hear more discussion, but that's, that's what I would like to do.
Do I make that in the motion, or?
Yeah.
We can have discussion?
I'll move that we approve what the staff recommends.
So you're making, you're proposing a tentative, uh, decision to accept the staff recommendation shown on the top of page six, and you're direct, you are directing staff to come back with findings to support that tentative decision.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Yeah, Bill?
Just while I still have the opportunity, I want to thank the citizens that came in and spoke tonight. We often complain up here that people aren't involved, we're not hearing anything, and then our decisions are criticized. So I appreciate that you took your time tonight to, to come in and talk to us. Thank you.
So just, so that I understand what this motion is, what kind of findings are we, I mean, what kind of findings would you be bringing back that we don't have already?
So right on page-
Supporting the main street idea.
We have findings that we wrote and presented to the planning commission in support of the, um, staff recommendation on the top of page six. So we could bring those back. If there's other things that you want in the record on why you're, you're making this decision, we can add that in, but it was based on the criteria in the development code, and we have those findings that, unless we get other direction, we'll bring back those findings that we brought to the planning commission, supporting the staff recommendation.
But the findings will be supplemented by references to the testimony that occurred tonight to-
Yes.
In the appropriate places where they support those findings.
That's correct.
That's, that's the reason why your best findings are ones that are written after the decision, so that you, after the tentative decision, so that we can incorporate the, the testimony of folks when they come to the meetings. If, if it was the other way, for example, and your, uh, decision was to affirm the planning commission, if you have the time, you might still make a tentative decision to affirm, and then incorporate the testimony you heard tonight as it would support those findings. So the best findings say, here is the criteria, here is the evidence that was presented in the hearing to support a conclusion, and here is the conclusion based upon those facts and that criteria. If you do it all in advance, without ever having heard the testimony or considered the testimony, your findings are often suspect if challenged on appeal. So that's why you would make a tentative decision when you have the time to do so.
And, and I think to answer Bessie's question, I think, um, what, what the motion would be is it's adding the language of the definition of these beverage container into our code, but it would be also denying it, um, to be located in neighborhood commercial, and then also denying it in the main street zone. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that does, that does.
All right. Any other?
Say something.
Yeah, Rich? Oh, and then David, or did you have something?
Well, it's just a procedural thing, uh, just to make it known that, um, we're approaching the one hundred and twenty day limit. Um, that one hundred and twenty day limit expires on March seventh. So we have one more council meeting before that comes up, just, just so you know. If it ends up being that this may extend past that, we would need to ask the applicant to, uh, grant an extension in time.
Which is not likely if your tentative decision is to deny. So what that means is, and in a situation where you come up to the time limit, you're going to need to be prepared to act, uh, at the next meeting. If you don't meet the hundred and twenty day time clock, essentially what it does is shifts the burden to the government to prove that you could not, uh, adopt the proposed change without violating the comprehensive plan. It just shifts the burden of proof a bit, if you will.
So can I ask, in order to, um, be finding a fact, does it have to be something that was testified at one of the hearings? And I'm wondering if maybe our-
Submitted.
Our CARA heard and renewal director ought to come and tell us what the advantages of the main street zoning are, if that ought to be part of the record.
You would have to reopen the hearing, you'd have to allow testimony on both sides in that regard, if she's going to present anything factual. If it's-
Well, that's factual.
Well, no, I, I don't mean factual in terms of honest or dishonest, or accurate or inaccurate, I mean factual in terms of offering data as opposed to argument. If I say something is good, I, I honestly believe it's good, but that's argument, it's not data. If I say it's seventy-two degrees, that's data, not argument. And so if you would have a director or staff come in and offer new facts, you'll have to reopen the hearing.
Karen's position is, is, uh, explained in the staff report that starts on the bottom of page twelve.
I thought I saw it.
And, and I didn't answer Counselor Olson's other question in that regard. The evidence that is in the record is the testimony that's received at the hearing, the, uh, record that is at the planning commission, and it is in the form of the staff reports and all of the supporting documents that are in the staff report. So it's your packet of information, but your information is frequently supplemented by testimony you received at the hearing, and so your findings are better if the findings reflect the testimony.
Okay. Is that it, David? Okay, Rich?
Um, as I'm listening to the people who objected, I hear that it will be loud with no evidence that it will be loud. I mean, when you are next to the railroad track and you hear a train whistle however many times a day, and you're worried about something that's going to happen inside of a building, um, that is insulated, or that would be insulated, or that could be insulated, the two are not, are not something that you can make a good point about, in fact. I understand people don't want any extra noise. When I am told that there is going to be a lot of traffic, there has been not really a whole lot of evidence that traffic would go up dramatically. Now, if you don't know how much traffic there is there now, how do you then say twelve more cars per, or, you know, how do you make that judgment? If there are twelve more cars per hour, that is a lot of traffic if there's one car per year that goes past, and it's not very much if there's three hundred cars that go past. I am having a bit of a problem with the idea that, because I feel a certain way, that that turns into fact, um, that I don't like it, therefore we shouldn't do it. But the people who have proposed the process, or, or, excuse me, proposed the center are putting up money and taking things off of, uh, paying no tax to now paying tax in an area that is on the edge of a zone that gets blasted by trains. I guess, I am in favor of allowing, I, I guess I don't have enough information to tell them no.
Anything else?
Okay, so you have a motion to, um, for a tentative decision to accept the staff's recommendation that's on top of page six. And with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, can we have a roll call?
Olson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kellum?
No.
Kopczynski?
No.
Covert?
Yes.
Okay, all right, motion carried. Okay, and so that will be coming back to us in, um, in two weeks, Bill?
I just, uh, final word to the applicant. I heard consistently from the public, the people that submitted it in writing, and other fellow counselors, that, uh, people are in favor of the business, but it just sounds like it would be more appropriate in a, in a area that's already zoned for that use.
Okay. All right, thank you, folks. Thank you. Okay, next is business from the public, and is there anyone here this evening that would like to bring an item forward? Anyone?
Evening. Um, I, I suppose you guys all noticed all the snow we had, oh, Jim Clausen, uh, one four zero, three fifteenth Street, Albany. Uh, suppose you all noticed the snow that we had there the other week. Seems that, uh, the whole country's, uh, getting that way. Uh, the, um, according to the ITCC, uh, the average global temperature has been dropping. Uh, their studies have actually shown that. Um, it has been for the last seventeen years. Uh, it seems like we're going to be getting more, um, of this, uh, plenty of little white stuff, uh, floating around like they're having in Georgia right now. I saw pictures there, that their downtown looked like ours, except they had a snowplow. Um, I'm thinking, uh, I'm thinking that rather than buying a, a bus from, uh, Gilling, or is it Gillis? I don't remember. What's the name of the place they were buying the?
Gilling.
Gilling, yeah. Uh, we should buy a snowplow, or attachments for snowplows for some of the buses that we do have. Um, yeah, because we're going to need them, I think, in the near future. Uh, the global warming is, is nothing but a hoax. It's a way for big government to come in and step in and, uh, take control of things. It's, uh, it's nothing but propaganda. Uh, it's a way for the government to, uh, grab hold of people and make them do what they want. Most people that have really looked into this stuff know that. Um, and I think, in fact, a lot of people that push the global warming agenda know that, too. Uh, there are sci- there are scientists after scientists after scientists that are against the global warming nonsense. I think, I think it was Drudge, I just recently read a thing, or, they had interviewed thousands of scientists, and seventy percent of those scientists did not believe that, uh, man, there was anything like man-made global warming. They believe in climate change, because climate does change, but, uh, global warming is a, man-made global warming is a fallacy, always has been.
I don't think that's something we're going to be able to solve here this evening.
Probably not, probably not. But I think it's something that needs to be taken under consideration, especially since half of the decisions made by this city council have something, or something, or some things to do with, uh, the so-called green agenda. Uh, it has to do with, uh, global warming, and, and a lot of the decisions, a lot of the sustainability nonsense is made from, um, from, uh, background information, from, uh, getting rid of CO2 and so, the wetlands thing is a, is a, uh, byproduct of global warming. Um, uh, I shouldn't say global warming, I should say anthropomorg- uh, what is it, APG? The, uh, anthropomorphic, uh, man-made global warming. Um, they, they've changed the name of it so often, it, it's hard to really figure out what the heck they're saying anymore. Uh, but I think it would be wise for the city council, especially in light of the last couple winters that we've had, uh, to thoroughly consider, uh, that we are quite possibly going into a mini ice age. Uh, there are scientists out there, plenty of scientists out there that have looked at that, and looked at the solar flares, that actually do affect, uh, the climate, and that the sun has settled down some, and that's why it's gotten colder. Uh, there, the flares haven't been as much as they used to be, uh, and they predict that that's going to be, uh, the, the case for the next ten to fifteen years. Um, CO2 has absolutely nothing and no effect whatsoever on the heat of the, on the heat of the planet. Um, and there, there's plenty of evidence to that fact. I think that, uh, the city council should be, uh, considering some of this stuff in their, some of their future deliberations on things.
All right. Okay, thank you. Anyone else from business from the public? Okay, Sandy, counsel, you have next is your adoption of the consent calendar, so if there isn't any items that need to be pulled off for discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Move adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And next, we have replacing some police vehicles, and here comes the chief. And this will be on page fifty-nine.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Um, one of the things that we want to do is, uh, make sure that our police department is being transparent, especially with the funds that we are using. So even though technically it isn't required to come for council for approval, we want to let council know some of the things that we are doing within PD. The first thing that we're doing this year is to replace some of our, I'd say, more administrative type vehicles. Uh, two of them are going to be trucks for our community resource unit, uh, three of them are detective vehicles, and the other one is a vehicle for our admin fleet. What we're trying to do is not just use state contract, but also try to make sure that if we can get a low bid within the community, that we are allowing local businesses within the community to, for us to buy those vehicles from. So what we did is we, we looked at state contract, plus we also looked at bids from the local area. So what you see before you are the quotes that we did receive. Um, there is one change, because on the third one, we just got a, another quote off of somebody else who was also on state contract, was a thousand dollars cheaper than the one you got before you, and it's out of Salem, and that was a Whitman Dodge. So are there any questions on the vehicle replacement? Yes?
Chief noticed it says that the, uh, lighting would vary between a few hundred to six thousand dollars each, so you're not sure the total at this one.
No, that depends on the type of vehicle. Like, the, uh, truck would be a little bit more expensive, because you're going to have overheads on it versus a vehicle that's going to be, have just deck lights inside.
But the, all of that, that additional cost is also already in approved budget to-
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, everything in here is always, is already within the replacement fund.
Yeah.
All right, these vehicles, four-wheel drive?
The, um, we usually buy, I don't know if I have that with me here, we usually buy all-wheel drive, so the Explorer would be an all-wheel drive vehicle. I can't answer if the Ford F-150 pick- I can't answer if the Ford F-150 pickup are four-wheel drive or not. Usually we try to do that, but I don't have that with me.
You heard the lecturer who just got about how we're going to have tough times coming. Might be good to get four-wheel drive if there aren't too much.
Another thing we've been doing too, especially with the police vehicles, is we have chains. So, and that's what we used when we had the snowstorm. We had chains on all the vehicles and we didn't have any issues as far as responding to locations and helping people out. And we had a couple of extra that were chained up, because some of the vehicles, the chains broke, so we just bring those back and change out.
Yeah, during the snow we had, there were some Catholic folks that were stuck trying to get into their parking lot. One of your officers came by and got out of his vehicle and helped us push cars out of the way. We appreciated that.
Yeah, they did, they did great over these last three days, both days and nights. They were out there, got out of their vehicles, helping people, digging people out, trying to get their cars moved. They did a lot of that.
Thanks.
And monitoring the bridges too, that was quite a chore. That was a mess, yeah. Okay, any questions over, oh, Bill and then Ray? Yeah.
Chief, I noticed that the retiring vehicles are all Fords and the replacements are various brands. Was there an advantage or a disadvantage of having?
The retiring vehicles that we're retiring are out of our admin fleet. What we did is we have some escapes that are in our detectives' unit that are older that we're moving to the admin fleet. One of my goals, I told them, is, because a lot of our detectives, since we have few people, I didn't want them all in the same vehicle, because if they're doing surveillance or something like that, it's kind of obvious when you've got four or five escapes on your street, something's going on here versus having a variety of vehicles. So that's why we went to a little different model and tried to expand it a little bit.
Good idea.
So when would you be picking up the vehicles if, when this goes through?
I believe it's going to work on placing the order probably the next couple of days.
Any other questions?
There's no action required.
No, no, it's just updating us.
That's correct.
Thank you, Chief.
On their activities, so thank you, thank you, Chief. And next you have the Gator police vehicle.
Yes. Another thing that I wanted to talk about with you is the police department purchasing a John Deere Gator. On January 3rd of this year, Sergeant Drum had borrowed a Gator from the Parks Department. And one of their goals was to be able to go out into the trail areas and do some checking on some of the transient camps and some of those issues that we have over there. Some of the issues that we've had before, getting into some of those remote areas is sometimes difficult to get there on a bike, and if you're using a bike, it took a while to get there, or if you were on foot. And then once you encountered somebody, if you did have to make an arrest, you weren't able to transport them out of there, you had to try to walk them out, and then walk to a location where you can get a patrol vehicle. One of our, our solution to that was to purchase a Gator, but it would be a four-seat Gator, so that in case we do have to make an arrest, we can put somebody in there. We've also, and last time they went out, they found a dog out there that had been stranded, put the dog in the back, took the dog to one of our crime, one of our CSOs, and they were able to reunite the dog with the owner. So, and it also helped us too with identifying a lot of the transient camps that we didn't know about, so we get them cleaned up. So basically, it's kind of a tool to help decrease the amount of officer time that are out there, and also allow us to go out there more frequently.
That's great, yeah, that'll really be used a lot, so. Any questions on that?
The one you borrowed, was that a two-seat or a single-seat?
I believe it was a two-seater. And it had one of those things on the back of it, so if you had, because it's one that the parks use when, when they have all the events and stuff in the summertime. So that's one of our goals too, is to be able to use a Gator to help support some of the events that we have during summer. And another way to help fund this is we're looking, we have the motorcycle that we don't use anymore. We're looking to sell that, so that'll probably come back to council, maybe the next meeting or the one after, about the request to go ahead and sell the motorcycle. And that would help offset the cost to purchase this.
Yeah.
And I do plan, hopefully, the next work session and the one after, to come back and kind of talk about crime within the community, give you an update of kind of where we're at, give you an update with manpower and kind of how we compare to similar-sized agencies in Oregon.
That'd be great, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, any other questions? Okay, well, thank you so much. Okay, next is the audit report, and Stewart, and I think Emre, the vice chair of the council audit committee too, yeah.
Whoever wanted to. I'll leave it off, I guess we have the audit committee, the annual audit committee meeting, got an absolute clean bill of health. They've got proposals in to potentially take a look at acquiring a new auditor, or possibly the same one, depends on how the, the review, reviews go, and Stewart can address that. But the findings were absolutely wonderful. The auditor did bring up some serious concerns going forward in a year, year and a half, as some of the new gap, GASB codes are being unfolded, it's going to affect not just Albany, but virtually every community across the nation that they're fighting, and pretty hard. Stewart can address those too. But it's, it looks, yeah, I don't understand how they came up with why they're doing it, but there's possible reasons, but it's still going to cause problems potentially across the nation for a lot of cities, virtually all cities.
Thank you, Mayor, and Counsel Kupczynski, and I counsel, let me first of all express appreciation for the council members that serve on the city's audit committee and receive on an annual basis the report from our auditing firm regarding the recently completed audit. So the most recently completed audit would have been for a year in 2013, and here we are halfway through 2014. As was mentioned, really the area of concern was not with the current audit that was reported to the audit committee, but some GASB regulations that will be coming in 2015. And GASB is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. And the issue that will be before that the city and all cities in Oregon and in most states has to do with the unfunded liability that most state retirement systems have. And in the state of Oregon, PERS has an unfunded liability, and that unfunded liability is shared by all of the participating agencies in PERS. And what GASB is suggesting is that each reporting agency should identify their piece of the state's unfunded liability in the retirement plan. The difficulty, and the reason it creates a difficulty for the auditors and for the city, is that we don't know what that number is. And it's difficult to determine that number without an actuarial study of the demographics of PERS, all participants in PERS, and then of the individual agencies. And so GASB is actually asking cities to include a number in their financial reports that is not an audited number. And that would be a concern for the auditors, because then they feel that they're in compliance with their regulations in conducting audits, they would not be able to give a clean opinion. They would have to be a modified opinion, because that number is based on a number that's not actuarially determined and audited.
And not getting a clean opinion can affect borrowing everything else down the road, couldn't it?
Right. And currently it would not allow the city to qualify for the, the award for financial reporting and the standards that are in place for financial reporting. But as Counselor Kupczynski mentioned, it's a concern not only in Oregon, and not only for the city of Albany, but throughout the country. So it's likely there will be things addressed with that GASB pronouncement. There is legislation that is proposed right now in the state of Oregon to be able to allow PERS to charge cities to do that actuarial study. But don't know how that's going to be determined or how it'll come out. That will be something as we will consider probably a year and a half from now.
Just a point of clarification too, that a lot of this has grown out of serious problems that some states are having in funding their pension plans. Oregon, the last time I looked, was either number three or number two in the nation in terms of the quality, of the percentage of our, our funding, the percentage of liability funded. I think we were at like 80-some percent the last time I looked, which was one of the best in the nation. So what this appears to be is, and of course, the other piece of that is that the nature of the funding changes relative to what's going on with PERS investments. Better than 65% of the money in PERS is, is investment earnings. And if you have years like the year we've just had, what you see is a declining unfunded liability. Of course, I'm not, if I could predict the stock market, I probably wouldn't be sitting here right now. But this is a very, very difficult issue for us to try and grapple with at the local level, we're just not set up to do it. And so we'll have to hope that the state comes up with some kind of a rational response.
Floyd?
I'm just wondering, who are they?
Is it GASB?
Yes, and are they a bunch of accountants sitting down with their green visors playing poker?
And I feel they're in a room with no windows.
Yeah, you know, and people fabricating standards that really have no substance and meaning to them in reality?
The objectives of GASB are to make standards that provide transparency for readers of the documents, and they're recognizing that there is an unfunded liability and some obligation of the participants to share in that liability, so.
What standing do they have? Are they part of a federal agency? Are they a group of municipal accountants?
Actually, I don't know the correct answer to that. There are a number of different standards. There's GASB, which is the accepted standard right now for municipal, I think, and state. And actually, the Government Finance Officers Association a couple of years ago was lobbying to switch standards from GASB to FASB, which is Financial Accounting Standards. So there are a couple, several, I don't know how many, different standards boards that establish standards for accounting. FASB is more common to private sector international trade, so it's not, it's not as germane as probably the standards under GASB. And there have been, it's pretty, GASB generally has standards about annually, there are new standards that we've had to meet of one sort or another.
And not, I mean, I, I don't want to speak in defense of GASB, because I've been moaning about it most of my career, but there is a purpose. And, you know, we've seen, what happens is, of course, the places that do not behave responsibly, where you have cities going into bankruptcy, where you have a state like Illinois, which the last time I looked, I think their pension liability was like 40% funded. Those kinds of situations develop because people were playing games with the numbers and not reporting in a transparent manner to their citizens. That has not been the case in this state. We have a pretty good record of, I mean, we, well, and I'll stick with that, a pretty good record, as opposed to outstanding, but a pretty good record of looking after our liabilities, making changes when they needed to be changed. There were significant changes to PERS back in 2003, and again in 2000, well, just this last year, there were also some significant changes. So, I mean, there, there are reasons why GASB goes down this road, and my hope is, is that between now and the time that implementation comes along, that they'll be able to work out some compromises that make sense.
Rich?
A question for Stewart. How is it possible to, for any organization, making standards to say that we're good, we're bad, we're ugly or indifferent, if we don't know what our liability is? I mean, if, if we're at 80-some percent, how can that be said, and they give us the stamp of approval or say we're doing well, when in reality, 80-some percent is, you know, if it's 85%, that's 15% of something that I don't have that has, is a gun to my How can they leave that out, I guess is what I'm asking?
And I'm not sure I'm, I understand the question particularly, but let me.
Well, I mean, if we, if, when, when the, when the time comes that our books are audited, and they give us a clean bill of health, how can you be given a clean bill of health if you have an 80% funded liability?
It's not us that has the 80-some percent, and it's, it is more.
It's PERS.
Closer to 90, it's PERS at the state level.
Right, but I mean, we're, what I'm saying is, if we don't know our piece of that, how can we plan for it?
Well, we do plan for liability that we expect, and we have been able to adjust, you know, our, our payments to PERS in accordance with, you know, the changes that the system has made.
And I could add that our, our approach in funding our liability is to fund it on a cash-as-we-go basis. In other words, we're funding that liability in each year's budget. What we're not funding is a future liability, and that's what's being identified. The unfunded liability is future liability, which practically, we will still fund on a pay-as-you-go basis, on an annual basis in each year's budget, because we'll pay that liability for current employees and those that are retired if there's costs associated with those retirements. So, and at this point, I'm not sure I would recommend differently. There is a future liability if it, and as you're suggesting, and as GASB is describing. And I want to mention, one of the other purposes of GASB is not necessarily to capture that number, but to lend consistency across organizations, so that we can compare, or our financial reports look a lot like City of Corvallis's financial reports, they look a lot like most cities throughout the country. And that's what GASB establishes, is that standard, so there's consistency to be able to look at records and hopefully create the transparency where users of the document can readily access the information they're seeking. So it establishes a standard that doesn't really say good or bad, that says this is how you report it, and then it's up to the auditors to identify, consistent with that standard, what's the position of a given agency. And so in our case, that's what our annual report is, is our, our auditor giving their opinion of how accurately our records reflect actual position of the city, and how that position is presented in the standards established by GASB.
Compared to everybody else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I could, Mayor, I wanted to follow up another comment that Counselor Kupczynski mentioned was about the review of proposals. Our audit this last year was the final year that Bolt, Carlisle, and Smith could perform an audit under our current contract. And as was mentioned, we received five proposals, we did issue a request for proposals. The staff report mentions five, we actually had six, but the sixth one was late, and was after the staff report, and so was not able to be received as well, because it missed the deadline for a proposal to be received. So there were five proposals that were reviewed. Sue Folden, who is chair of our budget committee, is also chair of the audit subcommittee, and she participated on the review committee, on the review of the proposals, and also on interviews with the finalists that were, that were invited for interviews. And that item will be coming to the council in the next city council meeting.
Okay, all right.
So do these GASB rules today carry over to how we put our budget together?
No. They apply only to the reporting of the financial information, so it's the year-round.
Well, maybe it may, it would make it easier to do the reports for budget to kind of fit in with how you do that.
Well, they are structured very similarly, but the actual putting together the budget is, is regulated under Oregon local budget law versus a nationwide.
That's another whole set of.
Right.
Regulations that come down to us.
Right.
So the people that complain about how our budget is hard to understand so far, it's not all our fault.
That's correct. They need to do it.
Any other questions over the audit? Okay, all right, thank you, Stewart. So, thank you, Ray. Okay, next, business from the council. Bessie, anything?
Not on your own.
Okay, Bill?
Not tonight, thanks.
Okay, Rich?
Nobody to sing happy birthday to?
No. Thank you.
Very good.
Okay, Floyd?
No, thanks.
Okay, yep.
And I didn't, I was just only going to say one thing though, for kind of global warming comment, was how we seem to be getting more frequent storms. This storm was still nothing compared to when I was a kid, so, and Bill would remember from 69.
I bet you walked to school too.
69 was our.
Uphill. Always.
Yeah, so 1969 was, we had, what, 30-some inches back.
There was three feet of snow on the beach.
Yeah. So.
So it's actually, our storms aren't as bad as what they used to be years back, so.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Ron, I forgot, I was going to say that I did want to offer my thanks, and to let the both chiefs tell their employees, their people, how great of a job they did during the storm. I've heard nothing but good things about it, and so it's just, it's great to know that we have such professional people who, no matter what the situation is, they can handle it.
Yeah.
So just tell them thank you for it.
And Public Works, too.
Yeah, and Public Works, yes, I'm sorry.
All those streets sanded, and now there's a whole bunch of sand that they're going to be picking up, but now you're kind of dealing with a lot of the rainfall.
Right.
And I saw Lockner Road was blocked, too, and so it looks like your department's still going to be busy for a while, monitoring the roads and our streams, and, yeah, so good luck, but, yeah, and thank you. Anything, Wes? Okay, anything, staff, have anything?
I have an update on the pedestrian crossings of Sandy M Highway, and our issues with ODOT. ODOT has said that they will approve outright our installation of the flashing lights at the pedestrian crossing, at the Bain Street Crossing. The Davidson Street Crossing, they are still holding back, because there are issues about progressions of signals. Now, what ODOT's not taking into consideration is whether you have a flashing light there or not. When a pedestrian is crossing, it's going to impact those progressions. So we'll continue to work on that. My recommendation to our staff is to move forward with the design for the Bain Street. We also, in the CIP, had a crossing, Waverly at Twenty-second. So we had three in the budget, so we could add the crossing at Gary and about Eleventh or Twelfth this year, and then budget for the other crossing on Sandy M next year. And that's what I would propose, unless I hear council asking us not to do that.
Do you have a timeframe?
For how long it'll take for construction?
To get it there?
I don't, we still have to go through the permit process with ODOT, but we'll start that, the design and permitting, well, we've started the permitting process with ODOT.
Are we thinking, are we thinking this year?
This, yeah, this summer.
This summer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Yeah, anything else? Okay, next week, we do have Kara, and then we, our next work session is February twenty-fourth, and our regular session is February twenty-sixth, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, folks.